So I have ordinance twenty twenty five oh five, which is the reductions that the different office holders came forth and gave back to the county for the twenty twenty five budget. I will say I have, I will have an additional one next month, because there's a few that did not get advertised that have given up more money. So we will have that one also next month. But for now, we'd like, I'd like to ask council to approve ordinance twenty twenty five oh five, and the reductions are in the amount of six hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars for seventy-five sixty-four.
Make the motion to approve.
Okay, I've got a motion to approve on that one. That's Scott's second. Any further questions on this one? Now, the other one, there was a little bit left on, and that will go to November's meeting.
Yes, yes. It's around, I think, ten thousand dollars, maybe eleven thousand more that we'll have, but we'll do a separate ordinance for that. But we'll go ahead and start working on making the reductions now on these, so that we get them in there. And that way, it just helps people at the end of the year to see what they have left in their budget to spend, if they, that they need to spend.
So the one from public defender is not on here?
Right, right. That one got, it was on the backside of a paper and it didn't get seen. So it's one that will also be on the one for next one. And I think I have more money that I can let go of in my deputies and my postage account.
And that was for about ten thousand or something?
About another ten thousand, maybe eleven thousand dollars, yes. So, and if there's anybody that, you know, all of a sudden, you know, oh, I have this extra that I can give back, they can give a hold of us, because we'll have to advertise it the first of November. So we have a few days for that.
Okay.
Any further questions for Martha on this one? I've got a first and second on this twenty twenty-five dash oh five. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Okay, Martha, that one's seven oh.
Okay. The second thing I have for you all is, you did defund one of my positions out of county general, and I found out that we have a fund called plat book. And it, when you do anything with a deed transfer, we collect money for that. And in talking to Jackie Clements and in talking to the two ladies from state board of accounts this past week at my conference, I can pay that salary out of my plat book fund. And I would like to ask that you all allow me to keep Carrie Barker, who is the deputy that that position was defunded. She's very important to our office. She handles every aspect of deeds, whether it's homesteads, taking applications for homestead, taking them off, going through the death notices. She's a very important part of the office, and I would just ask that you allow me to fund that position through plat book.
How long could you fund the position?
Uh, right now, I could probably do three years of it. And it doesn't mean that I can't do it indefinitely, because we collect money every single day for that fund. Every day that they do deeds, that they do transfers, we collect a ten dollar fee. Right now, I'm sitting with about two-hundred thousand dollars in that fund.
What else could that fund be used for?
It can only be used for things that are in regards to the plat book. So because the majority of her time is spent on those plat books and on the deeds, I can pay for that out of there. I pay for the supplies out of there. I moved the MVP contract out of my county general budget into that budget also.
Any further questions for Martha? Okay.
I have a question. Because it sounds so familiar. Have, did we have somebody else come back and want to do this?
Jessica's taken out of her perpetuation fund, is that what you're thinking?
Recorder.
Yeah, recorder has, her two deputies are taken out of her perpetuation fund and would just be driven for her time they record and pay so much. And so this time, she'll come back in November and ask, she has to do an affidavit, and then she'll ask that you approve that, so she can continue her deputies out of the perpetuation fund.
Also, Amy Voorhees moved two of her, well, a position and a half out of county general into her clerk's perpetuation fund, also.
Okay, so what other kind of expenses would you have out of plat book?
Well, like I said, I, I made my MVP cost to plat book. I would pay this salary out of plat book. We place some office supplies that we have to have for that out of plat book. And April also has a little bit of money in that for software.
So you say software, so some of those computer expenses that you have, could that be used, could this money be used for that?
So that's where my MVP went, out of my county general budget.
But is there another large amount you're looking for, for another program?
Yeah, not at this time. Because we can use, as long as we have support from MVP, and their representative was there at the auditor's conference, and they're not, we're not losing our support, at this time, we will stay with MVP. Because to move to Lao is about a three-hundred to four-hundred thousand dollar move. So until we have to do that, we're not going to do that.
That's good news.
Any further questions for Martha? I'll entertain a motion on this for disposition request, which would come out of plat, correct?
Yes, fund eleven eighty-one.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So, Martha?
I got a first from Jeff.
Second.
Second from Janie. Any further questions on this? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Got one no. Five yeses and two noes.
Thank you so much.
All no.
Yeah.
Okay. Brian Stouders.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I need to request a hire request for my bridge crew. I had to terminate a truck driver, so I need to replace him if I can. All NVH, same as before, out of the King Bridge runs, how he's paid. So I just need to replace a C D L driver.
Is that the one you've got advertising now?
That's one for district one. I actually have two slots open. I had three. I filled one. I got one for district one. I gotta wait till the guy's paid out of that line, finished. He was taking P T O. And then this guy just got terminated two weeks ago, so.
Because I think the one you filled is under Rodney's, wasn't it?
Yeah, Rodney's got another one open too. And this one's under the bridge group.
Yeah, under the bridge group.
And then hopefully, I'll be done asking for people to hire for a while.
Okay, so right now, you're on request to hire.
Yep, request to hire.
And the pay scale increase?
Nope, he'll start off at the low pay. The, whatever the pay is now, the twenty-one, oh, the pay scale increase is another subject. That's for somebody else. No.
So he's gonna start?
He'll start.
Okay.
Brand-new, twenty-one, whatever, until it goes to the twenty twenty-six pay scale.
Which, oh, that's out of NVH.
First, I gotta hire, yeah, first I gotta hire him, but yes.
NVH, yeah. Okay. Any more, any questions for Brian?
Are you allowed to say why you had to terminate?
Not in a public meeting.
No more questions? All entertain a motion on this one.
Let's go first.
Okay, Janie's first. I have a second.
Second.
Phil seconds on that one. Any further questions on this one? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Okay, that one is seven oh, Martha.
All right, my second subject is a pay scale increase for my bookkeeper, which is Janie. Right now, she's at the, the pay scale. She's on the courthouse pay scale. So I'm asking to increase her to pay scale E, and it's one thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars more a year. And it's just very affordable for us. Not that our budget wasn't already crazy with the different lines we gotta pull from. They're adding more to it next year with this house bill fourteen sixty-one, or twenty-one, or whatever it's called. So it's gonna get more. But main thing, she's been there five years, and honestly, if you had a pay scale F, I would have asked for that, but you don't. So I'm just asking to increase her pay scale starting January to pay scale E, which will just bump her up a thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars more a year.
And that's pay scale E?
Correct. Wage grade E, what do you got? You guys call it wage grade, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
Any questions for Brian on this one?
Can you speak more to the workload increase?
So the workload increase with the new house bill that they passed, starting mid-year, the community crossings is like divided now in three different ways. So what they're going to do is, go by counties who have wheel tax, you'll get, which they haven't said how much yet, because, you know, if they're gonna keep that low hat until they come out, you're gonna get so much, and that goes on, your restricted fund, but a whole nother pay line that you have to do construction only out of. So you gotta track it like community crossings and keep all that bids and all that stuff up. Like a, she's already doing restricted, non-restricted. If you guys seen our budget, it's crazy. And now she has to worry about another restricted budget line, so. And she does take care of thirty people out there. Mostly takes care of me, which I'm in a lot, so.
Oh, she was wanting budget. I mean, she works in the budget.
Oh, yeah, I mean, when they did have a superintendent, she did that all on her own. That tells you everything you need to know about that, so. Just ask him for, she's got five years' experience now. She's been there. She, I hope she don't plan on going away. I know she's got offered that pay scale at other positions at the courthouse. I'm not gonna say by who, but, uh, I mean, if she can get it offered somewhere else, I think I should be able to hear that.
I will speak to Janie's knowledge and experience, because I did try to hire her away from Brian, and I was not polite about it, and I was shocked, and I told him to the states. She's a very good asset to the county and to the highway, and she's very loyal to that department.
And I mean, she's like our H R, she's there, she's basically everything.
Well, and to speak to the federal grants that they get, she knows her grants. And, and we, when we do the S I F A to turn in to our interfinancial report, we do our calculations, and we send it to her. And we make sure that she matches us. So she's, she's very good to, and she's very good to work with, so.
And never failed state board of accounts. That's a big one right there.
I'm over to approve your question.
I got a motion from Jeff to approve that, second from Janie. Any further questions, Sabrina? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Okay, that one is seven oh, Martha, good.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
You all have a good night.
Next up is Paula Edwards. Or Bobby Brown. Let's get Bobby Brown. I know what Bobby Brown wants.
All right, I know that I was here, I wasn't here at the last, the main thing that we're talking about is the Loewitz money that Shawswick Volunteer Fire Department got left out of, okay? And not quite understanding that whole process, but I kinda wanted to let you know what we have done since we have become a territory for the county, okay? If you take a look down that list, it shows you how many runs that we've made inside the county or the city limits, okay? Free of charge, not charging the county anything at all. Not one dime have I received from the county. So if you take a look at that, we've done five hundred and three runs outside Lawrence County, okay? Twenty-five of those runs, IU Health had to cover me because I was covering the county somewhere else. I've been doing this for forty-six years, and cutting out one volunteer fire department out of the whole county, I just don't see it. Because you still have to have volunteers to run a fire department. I mean, I'm not like the city of Bedford, when they got nine guys on duty every day, okay? We have three people on duty, all right? And we respond immediately. If you take a look at it, under the Shawswick Volunteer Fire Department, Shawswick Volunteer Fire Department made eight hundred and six runs. This in the last two and a half years. This is volunteers getting out of bed, going on runs, and you cut the only funding that we had. Nothing comes to us, all right? And...
But now, aren't we in two different things here? Because you've got a volunteer fire department and a territory.
Yes, you do. And you cut my funding, okay? But you gotta understand that every, every piece of equipment...
You have your own tax base for the territory.
Territory, all right?
So be careful when you say there's no funding coming to us.
Well, I understand that, but there's, the Loewitz funding that you cut from me was for the volunteer fire department. That's the only funding that the volunteer fire department gets, okay? We had no other funding. All right, nothing comes into us, except that. Everything else goes into the territory, okay? And the big thing of it is, we've done this for free for, you know, two and a half years, and I'm coming to you to save, we're gonna have to have a contract come twenty twenty-six for us to back up the county for a name of service. You pay them a good amount of money to service county, but I haven't received a dime of it, haven't even been considered.
But I think back at the time that was done, I know the orders, that time we finished that, and ready, or whoever the consultant was, they advised that you would not be receiving that.
No, no, that's not true. The ready group didn't have nothing to do with that. That's the group that you, that you guys, that you use, says you don't have to give it to me.
We had that email go...
Yeah.
That's the basis that they...
But the basis that they put in that is, you don't have to give it to me, because I am a territory. Did not say you could not give it to me. And you guys made a choice not to give it to me, understanding that I'm coming to you with these numbers to show you that it takes the volunteers also to provide this service.
Well, you know, I've had this conversation multiple, multiple times, and even with Miller over this, what is gonna get even worse? One, we can't bring it back.
Right, I know you can't bring the Loewitz money back, but I, but I can make up my funding issue with, and I hate to do this, because, you know, I have family that lives all over Lawrence County. I got a lot of good friends that live all, all over Lawrence County, okay? I've served this community for forty-six years. I've been doing this forty-six years, all right? So it's in my heart. It's not, it's not something that I wanna do, but thing of it is, I got a business to run too, all right? And my business says that I can't, can't make runs outside my territory if I'm not gonna be funded. Because those vehicles are owned by Shawswick Volunteer Fire Department, not by the territory, okay? Every one of my vehicles I got, the two ambulances, all the fire trucks I've got, are owned by the township fire department, not by the territory. I mean, I understand what you had to do, and I'm not mad at you, because it's, you guys run a business, okay? You're running the whole county, all right? But you're, I can't go up against IU Health, because they're a multi-million dollar company, okay? I'm not saying I can do what they can do, 'cause I can't. But I think our service here has fit this county pretty well, and you cutting out the only funding that the volunteer fire department has to even do anything with, really hurts Shawswick Volunteer Fire Department. And, and for us to be the only one left out, that's kinda rude.
Well, you know, I had the conversation with Miller too on this, everybody's topic has been one, but when this lid goes away...
Oh, I know, we're all gonna be in trouble.
But you're the only territory, I mean, you say the only one left out, but you're the only territory, you're the only one with the tax base.
I, I, yes, yes, Scott, I understand that. But you're still missing my point. The tax base goes to the territory, it does not go to the volunteer fire department.
What does that money cover?
What does that money cover? Uh, they cover everything except for the mandate that you have by the state to pay your personnel, uh, their annual fee for being a volunteer fire department personnel for going on runs and that kinda stuff. Uh, you know, we don't, they don't count, you know, our annual meeting that we have and that kinda stuff, but...
But...
My point of it is, I don't want to get on to the point, but the point of it is, we've been providing this service to the county for free, okay? I'm not, not, you can say whatever you want, taxes is right, but we still do not have to go outside my territory. And I made an agreement three years ago, two, two and a half years ago with the county to say, hey, we will help out when we don't have any ambulances. That was my heart talking, all right? But my heart can't control a business either.
What's average cost of a run?
A fire department?
Charge to the patient.
Average depends on whether they're on Medicare or Medicaid, or whether they got private insurance, it varies. You know, you might get paid two hundred dollars a run, okay? It just depends. Now, Medicare, Medicaid is, Medicaid has come up closer to what Medicare does pay. Generally, you might get four to five hundred dollars per run. I mean, I can't tell you, 'cause it varies totally different, depends on how many miles you went. Depends on whether you took them to Bedford, or whether I took them to IU Bloomington. Or even a few times, we took them to Paoli, whenever, or Mitchell, whenever it's a pregnant lady or something like that. 'Cause we're a lot closer to a hospital that controls babies, we'll take them to Paoli if we have to. And we can see, we've been to Paoli three times, and that's the main three reasons we've been to Paoli. Everything comes right here to Bedford ninety-five percent of the time, unless they can't take care of the patient. So I'm just letting you know, the contract, I'd like for you to sit down and talk about the contract, asking for sixty-five thousand a year.
That would be, one of them's sitting right there, and one of them is sitting around the corner, I do believe. Contracts are commissioner issue.
Well, well, commissioners, no. Okay? So, um, I wanna thank you for your time. I mean, if you ain't got any other questions for me, I'll get out of your hair.
No questions for Bobby? You guys got any questions for Bobby? Okay, thank you.
No questions? All right, thank you for your time.
Miller, did, you good?
No.
Are you gonna stand up, or you gonna sit down? You had that look on your face.
Haven't been good for a long time.
No, seriously, you don't, you don't know what happens in the volunteer fire department, and every time we've gotta run, there's three of them out there, it's gonna get paid. But those other guys that shows up when that alarm goes off, and our fire truck goes out, our ambulance goes out, so do the, the volunteer fire department. There's those that pull out of their bed, they're still coming. And so they get there, they get nothing. And they're still doing that. So we, to be able to take care of this county, we've, we've worked over so many times, over and over. And I think they're doing a tremendous job. They've saved lives, they've saved houses. They, they say, well, how can you save a house when it starts on fire? They've gotten put off before, out of, the fire's gone, before it got into the house, come off the porch, whatever. And being there twenty-four seven makes all the difference in the world. But you still have to have more people than that sometimes when that alarm goes off. So those other volunteers, whether it's a man or a woman, whichever they are, they're going to the distance, they're going out there and meet them. So they need to get something. And I know they're volunteers, they, they've done it, but they do get an opportunity to be part of those that gets paid. You see what I'm saying? That's a rotating, it's not the same three every night. Right now, we need some more people on the ambulance and the fire truck, each and every time.
Miller, so is that what this is about, wanting to pay the volunteers?
Not necessarily. It's not just the paying them, but the other stuff that needs to be brought into the, uh, fire station. Whether it be food, whether it be whatever, there's more to it than just what the, the territory pays. The territory...
Shawswick Township funds the volunteer fire department, correct?
Pardon me?
Shawswick Township funds the volunteer side of it?
No.
Shawswick Township?
No, but you fund the volunteer...
No.
Part of the...
No, we don't, we do not fund the volunteer fire department. We, we take care of the territory, we take care of the equipment...
So that changed when the territory came about?
Pardon me?
So that changed when the territory came about?
Yes, that's right. Before that, we, we had like a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. Our, their contract was...
So what happens to that money?
They don't have it anymore. They don't have that contract.
So it just goes back into your fund at Shawswick Township?
Into territories. It goes back to territory. I no longer have the fund for that. We don't, it was taken out into the fire territory. So the fire territory takes care of fire territory. That's all the equipment, the ambulance, insurances, everything that comes down the pike, and it's getting higher all the time, that's beside the point. But this is about the finances that needs to go to the volunteer fire department only. They won't be coming through the township, it'll go straightly to the fire department, the volunteer fire department. And that's, you know, I, I think it's, should be. If I didn't think that, I wouldn't be here. So I hope you can do it. Pick it up and see what we can do. It's worth a shot. We've had a big change in this county since the fire territory came in. We have people that's mad at us, 'cause it costs four dollars more a week, or whatever in our taxes, or maybe fifteen dollars more a month on our taxes. But when the ambulance rolls up and picks them up and takes them to hospital and saves their life, it's great. Or the, the fire goes out in the house, or they, or they end up down in a crash down there. It makes a difference. And I know that the taxes was, went up back in twenty-three, but it wasn't all on the territory, which I've been accused of. That was when this, when you sent them down to my office to find out how come their taxes got raised, remember?
Yep.
And I showed the lady, you're only paying fifteen dollars a month more, but that's all you're paying on the fire department. But her total went up a little bit higher. I said, yes, but your house went up seventy-five thousand dollars worth more. So it wasn't just on the territory. And I believe that, that we've been kinda punished, because some of the people don't like the territory. But when all the taxes come in the same year that we started the territory, and the state raised the taxes, all, had all the, you know, whose didn't go up outside the territory? All of them went up. So we know it happened, but it was all come back on the territory. Then when we lose what money that they took, that the volunteer is getting, it, that's just more that's gonna have to come out. I, we can't let it go out there. They gotta have finances. So that's gonna have to come out of the territory. And right now, that's a real tight thing. We need new, new equipment. We've, we've purchased new equipment, but the township's paid for that. And we're gonna lease the stuff to them, 'cause they don't have the money. Hopefully, we'll be able to buy a new ambulance, that's our next step. Next step after that's try to get some more people into the territory, another townships, hopefully. And then we'll be servicing, we'll be serving Lawrence County like we should. And somebody's gotta stand up and say, well, this is what, this is what we should to do for the people. And, you know, I know that a lot of people get upset over fifteen dollars more a month, but those same people that gets mad over fifteen dollars more a month on their taxes are the same people out there spending it someplace that you can't get it back, blowing it. You know it, I know it. I look at, I wanna, I don't wanna say too much. I see things every day. I, I see the bank statements, I see where they spend their money, I know. And I know it's wasted. And they come in and they take money from, out of our township trustee to help pay their, this, all these things, and we're trying to still stay afloat for the territory. But territory's gonna stay afloat, there's no doubt about it. We'll, we'll make it happen, one way or the other. I mean, it'll come up somewhere. I just don't want it to be federal money. I don't want none of that. So, yeah, I'm really happy with the way the territory's working. I'm thankful for what you guys can do, you guys and gals, I didn't mean as guys, what you can do for us, I appreciate that. And I know that the volunteers, and, and I'll say this while I'm up here. And I know that the volunteers, and, and I'll say this while I'm up here. Everything that we've purchased, this fire truck for $500,000, we had put that money back and saved it in the township. We need the fire truck, so the fire truck's being purchased by the township, but see, the township citizens also paying taxes for the fire department. So now, we have the money to pay for that. Don't have to borrow any money on that, saving them a ton of money on interest to go borrow, borrow money to buy something. So we, we were tired of that. We built a brand-new fire station out there in 2016. And when I took over as trustee in '11, they couldn't keep the heat in the fire station long enough to keep, in the wintertime, keep the water from freezing in the, in the trucks. So it took us three years to have enough to start building a new fire department, a building. That's not an shame. The, the trustee should have been ashamed of what was going on. And so should the board that was behind it. And we tried to change that, it didn't change, but we got it changed, takes work. And as we did that, we don't want to leave anybody out. They volunteered for years and years and years, now they're getting paid. Okay? But it's a rotation. But it's nice to have that extra out there that they need, whether it's food, or whether it's, whatever it may be. I keep saying food because I, you gotta feed them when they go out. But also, it helps pay their gas when they go out and run up that run. They may leave that fire station, and they may end up over and need more, if they're helping that. Or it may be down, you know, south town, or in town, or out in east Olytic, or Olytic, or whatever, it's still gas, and that, and that's their own vehicle they're driving. Not ours.
Do you guys have any more questions for Miller?
I do have one.
I've talked long enough.
Do you, do you know how much money the fire territory tax generated for you, for the territory?
I would have to go check in the, in the books, I'm not sure. I can tell you what our budget is for the fire territory, if that's what you're asking.
Well, I wanted to know how much the money, how much it generated, but I'll, I'll take your budget.
Okay. Probably, the budget for the territory is right at a million two. And, uh, I have to think, and I think our, our rate is 680,000. We got, I think last year, the ambulance brought in, I want to say $125,000. That goes back into the territory. So-
Thank you.
Pardon me?
Thank you.
It goes back in the, it goes back into the territory funds, the ambulance. We get paid for that. We get paid that monthly. And that's a lot of work, too. Sometimes you don't get paid. I mean, the insurance doesn't pay back, but most of them do. Some of them don't, and that's okay. I mean, we can't, they can't pay it, we're not gonna make them. If they're in our territory, they're paying taxes, if they can't pay it, then okay, we don't go after them. But if they can pay it and don't pay it, then we go after them. There's, there's a whole lot more to it than just, you know, open the door and it's all there. It's not easy. And I really appreciate our fire territory. I appreciate Bob. A lot of people don't like him, but I like him. So, so we've frustrated now about 15 years. So I hope that you can look at that and see what we actually need. We're, we're not act, we're not asking for something that's not necessary.
Do you have a question for Bobby, just off the wall? How many active members do you have?
Volunteer ones? Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, good number.
But out of that budget, Jenny, just to get your, you gotta remember payroll taxes, payroll taxes. It's just not, yeah, that million two looks nice, but there's a lot of it that comes out there, too. Just like you guys know how much your payroll, what your payroll taxes are, and what your income tax, and all that kind of stuff. So it's not as glorified as it looks, but it's better than what we have. Okay? And providing a better service.
Thank you, guys. We're gonna move on. No, you don't need to call it. Call it.
Are you sure?
No.
We've had a part-time employee that's given notice that her last day will be November 7th, and so I'm coming before you to ask to replace that part-time employee. It is a position that's paid out of our HFI appropriation, so it is, you can kind of, appropriation is sort of like a grant.
So this one is through your office, then?
Yes.
Through HFI?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions for Paul?
Just, what, what is it? Is it a-
The position, it's, it's on the clinic side, it's a front desk position. They do scheduling and, uh, go to off-site clinics and a variety of things.
Do you guys have any questions? Okay. Then, I want to kind of motion on this one. Scott, next question. Julie makes a second. Any further questions? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and then items for consideration, we have rescind resolution 2019-10. And then what that is, is the modification of the tax abatement fees, which right now they're split. You guys got the papers in front of you. Fifty percent goes to Economic Growth Council, fifty percent goes to RDC. And that would rescind this motion.
Are you doing this as one motion, or are you doing this as two?
Well, that is, you want that more or two?
The resolution that's proposed has it in that resolution, so if you would make a motion to approve or on through whatever, the 2025-10, it is in that.
Okay. Well, we'll get one motion, which also leads you back to, it's back to the same thing, except, uh, there is no split in the abatement fees. One hundred percent goes to RDC. And we had conversations today, and I think you did too, that this is not, on the abatement fees, it's not going backwards. It's just forward, from today forward. Nothing backwards will be changed.
Is this for the Lehigh abatement?
No, it is for no abatement. We have no abatement.
No, there's no abatement on the table.
This is the default, or if there's not a specific recommendation for the abatement committee, like the last one was, had to be five years, had to be 100% RDC. This is the default, that it within the abatement would be recommended or not recommended by the abatement committee, because the council will default, it'll be 100% RDC, if this passes tonight.
And I've had time to think about that. I've talked to Dan. And since the abatements come through the Growth Council, like Dan said, what would his incentive be to bring those and do all the work that they do, and not get anything for that work? I mean, I, it took me a while, I, for all time, I was thinking this was still talking about Fiber Tech. And I thought that was a one-time thing, where we pulled back the 100% from Fiber Tech. I am not at all in favor of saying going forward, we're never gonna give economic development any money again. I'm just not in favor of that, it doesn't make any sense, and it would be very hard on that organization. I would also say that I think we had a director before that had a little problem with communication. Um, I believe Dan will be more astute in coming before us and telling us what he is doing, what Growth Council is doing for the county as a whole. Maybe monthly, maybe quarterly, but I do believe Dan will do that. He's already been attending more meetings. I sit on that board, and, uh, nobody has ever asked me to give a report on what goes on. And I think it just would be better coming from the director, and I think Dan will fill that position. But I do think that they've got, they've gotta have some, some part of this, uh, tax abatement to make it worth their time, to-
Well, you're still paying membership fee.
Twenty-five thousand dollars.
And you're following basically what the city has done. The city paid 50, we paid 25, but we gave at one time all of it, then we went to 50%, but the city's still-
You changed that under you, and I thought, I didn't think that was a bad change, but that's what I wa, I prefer.
But I'm just saying going forward, all we're doing is modeling basically what the city does.
I don't care about modeling the city, I care about what I think is proper for-
Well, what do you see that the city has gained from what they paid into that organization, and what do you see the county got?
I don't know, that would be up to the director to tell you. Are you, I, it looks to me like, again, the director may have to address that issue.
Well, I can just say, looking back, the county has, since the RDC has started and started collecting those fees, they've done things such as recapture, found the money that was in the, uh, PRD capture funds, it was about 200,000. They reinvested part of that into the fire department up there, they've voted for fish hatchery, they air-conditioned the, uh, shore rent, the fairgrounds with that portion. Um, they've made a commitment to the Marion Township Fire Department for $50,000 a year with three times, or three years towards ending the fire department. Uh, this is all county-driven projects. That's just off the top of my head.
I would also remind the members that the RDC stepped up when we needed it during budget time, we offered $200,000 to help out.
Yeah. And I appreciate that immensely. They also were collecting that 50% that they had from 2019 forward, they've been collecting 50% of the abatements that we had already put into, that had originally, 100% had gone to the economic development group, so.
I think if we're gonna have a blanket statement, I would rather see it split between the two organizations. And then any shift could be adjusted on a case-by-case basis as abatements are presented, using the Fiber Tech, for an example.
I agree.
I'm gonna agree with Jeff. I think RDC stepped up at a really good time when we needed it.
And you wanna go have that option if you, I mean, you're, you're gonna limit it, and there's nothing saying the RDC would have to come back and, and do those things, but you have that option there.
There's nothing saying that RDC has to, regardless.
That's why I was just saying.
I, I have a question for the sheriff. Did, have they contributed, RDC, for any kind of cars, or for you, or giving you money on that?
I think that's from the budget.
That is the budget, we did the $200,000.
That was included in that, okay.
But going forward, we have the option now, I mean, the city utilizes this money a lot for their projects. Uh, I talked to the mayor for an hour or longer about the money they use, and they do it not like, well, they do it basically like Rick's proposing here. If we would have had more time, even prior to budget time, there was other things we could have done to utilize more money. But we were kind of in a, a pinch finding projects that fit the mold that has to be used, uh, when you're using the revolved money. And you also have a bond that that organization has to stand good for, too.
Scared me to death, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, if you're taking money away from that bond, you're putting that on the backs of the general.
Well, who thought of saying that?
You guys voted for it, I wouldn't hear.
You were quick to-
I was gone.
Okay, like I say, this one is just, this is not going backwards on any existing abatements. This is forward only, from this point. And right now, to my knowledge, I mean, you two would probably know more, I don't know of anything even on the table of being talked about. That's part of the fact.
Is it appropriate to address the council?
Yep.
Get it?
Sure.
I'm due to this, but for three times in 12 years, I sat where you're sitting. And I know that's not easy, you guys have been forced to make some, some tough decisions. But to, you know, I asked each one of the entities that we have partnerships with, City of Mitchell, City of Bedford County, and I talked to a majority of the council, Scott and Rick, we've all had conversations, Janie sits in on the meetings. We're not asking anybody to fund us in money more than what you were funding us before. All we're asking is that we leave things the same until we can, can get a handle. My role is to bring opportunity to this community through jobs, job creation, and expansion of business and new businesses. It's a service we are providing, and providing a service costs money. To your point, uh, this only affects going forward, but how much money is the RDC sitting on today?
Uh, there's a lot, I mean, there was money moved-
Yes, just, just spitball. What, what do you think you have in there? Two hundred, 250?
Yeah, because I don't-
Where did that $200,000 come from?
Some of it was moved from the hospital fund.
Okay. Any idea how much of it came from tax abatement fees?
Uh, we've just had a little bit moved, it was last year.
I know, you know, Martha's team today wrote the check to the county for their portion of the abatement fees today, and that check was for $80,000. If I'm getting 50% of it for the Growth Council, that tells me that $80,000 is coming your way. We're providing that service.
You're also getting, we pay for a fee, do you though?
Right, $25,000.
And we're proposing, like, the city's stepping that up. I mean, we're just really, what the discussion was, is do something more aligned with the city of Bedford does, so that we would have-
And I'd like to see the city of Bedford do more like what you're doing, but that's a conversation for a different thing.
I'm sure.
And, and we appreciate, we do appreciate the-
We've got the budget issue.
Sure you do.
And-
So do I.
Right, so I mean, that's kind of where I'm looking at it, and like I said, also there was, you know, the bond that was voted the same good for the county, and I just think that you do what you want, but you're gonna have to be looking at a lot of liabilities down the road if things would go-
Well, my hope is that, uh, that we can do a pretty good job of bringing funds to the RDC. I mean, I started this, this in August, uh, so we've, we've got, I've still got a lot to learn, there's no question about that. And I appreciate the $25,000 investment the county's making. Um, but to lose potentially $80,000 for a $230,000 budget is a significant enough hit that, uh, we would have to change our model of business.
How much do you receive from the city, though?
Fifty.
Well, the question is, you, you say you're gonna lose 80?
No, that's, 80 is what we're getting this time. There may be zero going forward, we don't know what that looks like.
Yeah, but one, one saying is, this doesn't change, Jenny, tell me-
Right, that's what I'm saying. The, the idea here is if, if we can go out, you know, I send in RFPs twice a week, three times a week, that we're getting businesses that are approaching the state that want to locate in, in this area. And so we, we bid on those things, whether it's through the shell building or other things. Uh, if we get one, and, and it brings in $20,000, and, and you get $10,000 of it, and we get $10,000 of it, I mean, to your point, the things that are already on the books, those that, and we appreciate that, that's great, that's keeping us funded right now and into next year. But I've gotta think long-term, as these companies think long-term. When Stuart Reardon decides to add a line of machinery, he's thinking long-term. And the county's benefit is, is if we can get Stuart Reardon to do that, that at some point in time, that machinery ends up on the tax rolls, and the properties end up on the tax rolls. The idea is to build the tax base, and that's what we do. You have to have a lot of tools in the toolbox to get a company to do that, but that's our role- role, and that's the service that we provide.
One thing I got a question on is what, and you made this statement there a minute ago, that this is a default. If this passes, this is a default unless the abatement committee suggests something different to the council.
So that's what happened with Fiber Tech. So it's my understanding, the abatement committee on Fiber Tech, if we're not doing ten, we'll give you five, but it has to be a hundred percent to RDC, and that's a take it or leave it. If you don't go for that, it's done. The default is, is that like standard abatement, if they came, they wanted a standard tenure, whether it's personal property or real property, that's, that's what it would be. That's what Powell was putting in two thousand nineteen, which was in here.
So if this passes, then it would be put a hundred percent of the abatement fees, which there is none on the table at RDC. But if the abatement committee comes back in and says, we're not gonna do that, or we're not gonna suggest that, we're gonna suggest seventy-five, twenty-five, or whatever.
And that's up to the...
That's up to the abatement.
Yeah, at the end of the day, every abatement that comes in will have a scheduled recommendation, and it'll have a recommendation of a split between the three entities. I guess BUEA doesn't, isn't part of it anymore, but, but the breakdown will be on each one of them, but the default currently is fifty-fifty, and obviously, that's where we would like to see that default stay.
So I think, and, and this is not to, not that I'm not grateful for what RDC has done, but we don't have anything on the books coming up, just to me, I think we leave it be, and there's nothing says we can't consider this again a year from now, six months from now.
Well, and there's nothing to say that we can't make the same decision on the next abatement.
Yeah, you currently have an agreement of fifty-fifty, and Fiber Tech was put in at a hundred on a five-year. You still have the flexibility to change it if you don't like what's proposed, to her point, that it's just the default. Like I said, the current resolution that you have, you were still able to do a hundred percent at five years and not do the, the standard. So I mean, it's not that you're losing the ability to make a change.
So it really doesn't need a resolution to do business as we want to do?
That would be her call.
I mean, if we, if we leave the default at fifty-fifty...
You could just rescind the two thousand nineteen dash ten and just have no, nothing on the books. I would be absolutely reluctant to do that. You could take it with each recommendation. You could be happy to.
It'd be hard for anybody to measure off of it. Maybe she did. I mean, it's gonna be you, Janie, and I, and we could do however we want it.
So do you want a motion on table on this? You wanna do a motion on doing nothing on this?
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution twenty-five, two thousand twenty-five dash ten.
I'll second.
I've got a first to accept this Resolution twenty-two-five dash ten from Jeff and a second from Scott. Any questions or comments on the motion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Nay.
You got three noes?
I got Janie, I got Janie, and I got Phil for no. What are you, I got three yeses, you have a tiebreaker.
I'm gonna go yes, to accept. And that will take care of the other one.
Right.
It's all clear as mud then.
Oh, it's crystal.
Yeah.
Sam Arp.
Sheriff Greg Day.
Um...
You don't have anything else, right?
Sure. If you gotta vote, so, well, Scott, you...
You can just go ahead and preliminary say yes if you want.
Correct. None of these are out of general fund.
No.
These are, yeah. Okay, Sheriff Greg Day.
All right. All right, real quick, jail population eighty-four, sixty-eight males, sixteen females, holding thirteen for DOC, one parole hold, and then two level-six felons that were sentenced here locally. The next thing, I have the, I assume you guys have it, the third quarter commissary, commissary report fund?
Yes.
With the new law that went into effect in July, the sheriffs now have to provide that to you quarterly instead of just twice a year, so this is the first, first one of the quarterly. So this is July through August commissary report. Just has all the expenditures and all of the income we had, if anybody has any questions on that. Nothing current, shattering. They do like their recids. I like them too, keep some com, comments. Any questions at all on that?
Any questions for the commissaries? Phil?
No.
Okay. Next, I guess, we'll do the additionals. Again, they're called additionals, not really, because they're in, the money's already in the funds, it's just putting them in the correct line. The first one would be, I think you have the Fund eleven fifty-six firearms, arms fund?
Yes.
Okay. And that is a request for five thousand dollars from that fund to put in the line four-four-two-zero-two, which was, is the firearms purchase line, and that will help cover the cost to purchase our new handguns for the department.
And again, basically, this is like Rodney's, it's all transfers. It's not, it's called additional...
Not a transfer. Not transfer.
But it's not coming out of the general fund.
They're putting it in their appropriations so they can spend it.
But it's not coming out of general fund.
It's not coming out of general fund. They already have the fund.
Yeah, this is the firearms fund that we get from the state. Used to be firearms licenses, now they just give us a lump sum every year.
Do you want these one at a time?
Well, that's why I was looking, you want, we need, probably should do them one at a time, because they're different funds.
Motion to approve.
Okay, I got a motion to approve. I think Julie got that one. Any questions on this one? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Okay, Greg, that one's passed.
Okay. The next one should be Fund four-zero-zero-nine, the Sheriff's Sale Fund. And again, this is, this is a fund that used to not have a budget, but we got everything in line and set that up this year. So this is requesting three thousand dollars from that fund, which there's a hundred and seventy-some thousand dollars in that fund, I think. It's moving three thousand of that into the contracted services line, three-nine-six-zero-one, and that is just to cover the, the contract money that we'll pay to SRI, who conducts the Sheriff's Sales Advertisers, conducts the Sheriff's Sales. There's really no way knowing how many we're gonna have throughout the year. It, it just varies, so this'll just hopefully cover whatever the rest for the year is.
Any questions for Greg on this one?
I'm gonna have you go.
Okay, Jeff made a motion to approve that second. Phil made a second. Any questions on this one? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Okay, Greg, that one passed.
I will say, just real quick on that one, like, every time there is a sale, three hundred dollars is coming in, so this additional money, it's going to that equipment line, but the money's coming, more money's coming into us than what we're paying out for each sale anyways, so, that's that. Okay, and the last one is Fund four-one-zero-four, which is the Sheriff Donation Fund, and that's in the amount of eleven thousand twenty dollars. And this is money that Hoosier Uplands awarded us to purchase new AED batteries and pads for all of the, all of our officers, have them and carry them in their cars, and then we have some in the jail and whatnot. So they granted us this money to pay for all those, so it went into the Sheriff Donation Fund. I just need to put it into the equipment line in the Sheriff Donation Fund, so we can make that thing up for the things.
Questions for Greg on this one? Except a motion on this one?
Motion to approve.
Okay, I got Amy and Phil. Amy first, Phil second. Any questions on this one? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Okay, Greg, that one passed.
Okay.
That's your last one. Correct.
I have hiring request.
Pardon?
Hiring request?
Yeah, but I mean, on the...
Oh, yeah, that's the last addition, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, and then you have a hiring request.
Yes.
Okay.
To, I'm requesting to, permission to hire two jail officers. We, we recently parted ways with two jail officers in the last few weeks, at my request. And so, but these are not new positions, we're just replacing current ones. These positions are already in the budget for next year. It's nothing new. I have, actually, I have one person who we interviewed during the last process that, so we have somebody ready to hire for one of them, and then the other one, I am going, that's the one I'm, I'm going to move my receptionist. If you remember, at the budget time, I'm moving my receptionist to that one, because she's taken over the SVOR and those duties as well, so she'll be filling that, that position. So if you approve him, I have both positions ready.
The first one is a new hire from outside of the county?
Yes, yeah.
So that would come in at a lower scale than what you lost?
Yeah, they would come in at the, at the basic scale, yes. And then by moving that receptionist over, not only, I mean, yeah, she'll be at a higher scale, but then there's no more payment going to the receptionist too, that's going away with that, so. And then that would just leave me with one jail opening left, and you guys have already gave me permission to hire that, but that is, he's still on FMLA for another few weeks, so I can't fill that spot until he's officially off the books there, but, so...
So your request is one, two jailers?
The two jailers, yeah.
Two jail officers, okay. And ten motion on this one?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Phil first, Janie second. Any questions on the motions? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Okay, Greg, they're both approved.
Okay, thank you. And then the last thing, this is not, not asking for anything, it feels like that's all we ever do in here, but I just did wanna give you a quick update on a new program, a new partnership that we're starting with the South Central Region Eight Workforce Board. They have a grant to provide a reentry, reentry program to eligible incarcerated individuals prior to their release, and then continuing their services after release, and this'll kick off in January. It's implementing what they call LEAP. It's a link-in employment activities pre-release, and the goal is to break the cycle of recidivism by linking participants to the workforce system early, before they're actually released, and that should cut down the amount of time between the time they get out and before that they're, they have meaningful employment, to where they can contribute to the society. And it will be for incarcerated individuals who we know will be released between thirty and two-hundred-and-seventy days from the time that they request to go into the program. And then the only other requirement is if they plan on residing in Lawrence or one of the surrounding counties upon the release. And the program will have like some skill-building workshops, teach them how to, and help them do resumes. We'll give them, teach them how to interview, skills to interview, give them mock interviews, some career counseling, work-based learning, labor market information, and then partner service referrals, support services, and some classes on like workplace conflict resolution to make them more successful once they're in...
Are there lawyers, attorney, who have expressed interest?
So this, so I'm sure that the, you know, the workforce folks have those connections already, because they're, that's, they're really careful about making sure that the people that, that request to be in it, and that they accept into the program, like, they don't wanna burn bridges with the relationships they do have, so they wanna make sure they are, you know, to the letter of the, the law as far as qualifications and all that. I don't think we're just gonna have a ton of people that participate, because we just don't have an overabundance of people that are in jail that period of time. But they actually did tell me that if we had some people sentenced to DOC, if they were gonna be released less than two-hundred-and-seventy days, they would go ahead, and even though they may go up there for a little bit later, they would go ahead and start the program and help them here and stuff. So even if it just helps a handful of people each year, I think it will be a very positive thing for the community, so, pretty excited about that opportunity to see how that goes, so.
Very good.
All right, that's all I got, unless you all have anything for me?
Questions for Sheriff? Okay, thank you. Okay, Chief Public Defender.
You were supposed to skip this.
Supposed to skip that one? I tried to skip Shaw's.
Might as well skip me, I don't have a report, if you have any questions. I really don't, I don't have anything to report. Show up just in case there was any questions, I know that...
Why not?
Huh?
Why not? That's my question.
What do you wanna hear?
You don't have a report.
I don't have a report, yeah. The only thing that I, I came prepared to talk about was the budget reduction, but Greg said that all, that all got covered before I came. I came a little bit late, but if we needed the numbers and the lines and everything, I had that, but other than that, everything's tracking toward the end of the year, so...
Yours was one of the ones, I'm, there was a couple more that didn't make this round. They will be in November.
Correct.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Those will be in November.
Yep. The, it was a nine-twenty-seven-twenty-five email that outlined everything, if you need to go refresh. She's got it.
No questions?
I appreciate the fact that you did show up.
Didn't know if there was any questions, I, I was on the agenda, so...
And I appreciate it, if there might have been.
Okay. Fastest time up.
Yeah, some people are on the agenda and don't show up.
Yeah.
Okay, nothing from Ted. We got court orders, we've got three court orders. One's from Circuit Judge Nykirk for four thousand three hundred and twenty-one dollars.
Thank you.
One's from Judge Plummer's Court for ten thousand six hundred and ninety dollars. And one is from Judge Klein's Court for eight fifty-four sixty-five. And that total on the court orders is fifteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-five sixty-five, and there's nothing we can do on those. So that is court orders. Any unfinished old business? Then I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Submit.
Janie's first.
Second.
Julie's second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye for adjournment. Who does?
Judge, you signed on the wrong side. That's the warrant for the abatement, and you voted yes.